Well, good afternoon. My name is Ben Johnson. I serve as the President and CEO of the New Orleans Chamber of Commerce, and it's my pleasure to welcome everyone to New Orleans, Louisiana. Thank you. Madam Secretary, Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Uchelini, and President McDonald. On behalf of the New Orleans Chamber, welcome to New Orleans for your week-long annual meeting of the society. I also bid welcome to the roughly 3,500 participants in this extraordinary field of science that saves countless lives, protects American businesses day after day. A special shout-out to Mr. Ken Graham, the meteorologist in charge of the New Orleans Forecast Office of the National Weather Service and his fine staff of forecasters on whom this region and city depends for accurate weather information. I assure you, they do a stellar job. Ms. Segur, I'd like to thank Lockheed Martin, a member of our chamber, for providing patron sponsorship to the AMS once again this year. So, ladies and gentlemen, there are few communities in America as in tune to the impact of threatening weather than New Orleans, and none more respectful of the service provided by the National Weather Service and the many private sector businesses in the weather enterprise. In that regard, the New Orleans Chamber, representing over 1,500 businesses, is keenly aware that even a perfect forecast is not successful unless we know how to prepare for it and how to react to it. The National Weather Service's "Weather Ready Nation" campaign has really resonated with our community through its theme of "Ready, Resilient, and Responsive." Our businesses, our economy, are entirely weather-dependent, so we need to ensure that this theme is not simply acknowledged but is acted upon. Our members have vested interest, both personal and economic, in spreading the word about becoming weather-ready. To help expedite a better understanding of preparedness and responsiveness goals and to make New Orleans a safer community and a stronger one for commerce, we are today pleased to announce that the New Orleans Chamber will be supporting the information campaign by challenging all of our member businesses to become "Weather Ready Nation" ambassadors in 2016. With your help, Dr. Uchelini, Dr. Sullivan, this great city will become better-prepared, more responsive, more resilient in the face of future weather impacts. We all know that storms will come, but when they do, we will be ready. Thank you and enjoy a productive and fun week in the new New Orleans that is becoming weather-ready. Thank you.
It's my pleasure, as President of the American Meteorological Society, to introduce Commerce Secretary Penny Pritzker. As the 38th U.S. Secretary of Commerce, she was a key member in President Obama's economic team. She came with 27 years of private sector experience. Before joining the administration, she founded and ran five different businesses in real estate, hospitality, senior living, and financial services. Since taking the office in June of 2013, she's worked closely with the business community and helped advance President Obama's priorities of expanding growth and opportunity for all Americans. Guided by conversations with 2,000 business leaders, including many Fortune 500 CEOs, she has developed an "Open for Business Agenda." This bold strategic plan and policy blueprint for the Commerce Department focuses on expanding trade and investment, unleashing government data for economic benefit, spurring innovation, protecting the environment, and executing these priorities with the operational excellence as careful stewards of taxpayer dollars. In a keynote address to the AMS, the Washington Forum that we had in the spring, Secretary Pritzker announced that NOAA is forming new alliances to help bring its vast data resources to the public. Partnerships such as those with Amazon Web Services, Microsoft Azure, IBM, Google, and the Open Cloud Consortium help address the growing needs for access to NOAA's huge and rapidly growing environmental data resource. Secretary Pritzker earned her Bachelor's Degree in Economics from Harvard University and JD and MBA from Stanford University. Please welcome Commerce Secretary, the Honorable Penny Pritzker.
Dr. McDonald, thank you very much for the kind introduction, but more importantly, for the contributions you have made during your career to NOAA and in your present capacity at AMS. It is great to be back at the American Meteorological Society. I enjoyed meeting with you this past spring in Washington, D.C., where we began a discussion of how the National Weather Service's Evolve initiative could impact your work, and I gave a preview of NOAA's Big Data Project. So I come here today to take that discussion further, to talk about the challenging yet exciting future facing all of us across the weather enterprise. What better audience than you, our core constituency, to engage on these matters? Never has the relationship between the National Weather Service and the weather enterprise been more critical. The tragic events of the holiday season, including the tornadoes and the severe flooding across the South and the Midwest that claimed so many lives, have reminded us once again that addressing high-impact weather is one of the great imperatives of our time. As we respond to the growing number of storms, floods, droughts, and other extreme events, we must also contend with the acceleration of technological advances and the onrush of the data revolution. Plus, we have so many actors in the weather enterprise, including university researchers, startups, and big companies, all exploring new roles within the weather community. This confluence of developments is both challenging as well as inspiring many of us in the enterprise, including those of us at NOAA. We at the National Weather Service recognize that our role is not only to make predictions, but fundamental to our mission is the protection of lives, livelihoods, and property. We have to better integrate the science we undertake with the community we are committed to serving. In other words, we have to evolve. Why is evolution necessary? At NOAA, we believe society is becoming more vulnerable and that we face an urgent need. Today, 39% of Americans live in areas of high susceptibility to extreme weather, and in those places, the population density is four times greater than the nation's average. When communities are hard-hit by storms, 25% of the businesses affected never recover, and of those that do, they have a high likelihood not to survive. Bad weather also saps our economy, disrupting everything from air travel to farm work, from local businesses to our largest conglomerates. Whole supply chains are often stalled, interrupting the flow of people, goods, and services, all of which are fundamental to the functioning of our economy. It is not an overestimation to say that the high-impact weather is one of the greatest threats to our nation and the entire world. At this time, it is up to all of us to double down on our efforts to address it, and that's where the National Weather Service's Evolve initiative comes in. To talk about evolve, we have to talk about the historic tornado outbreak of April 2011, where tragedy taught us a seminal object lesson. Accurate weather forecasting is necessary, but it is not enough. It is not sufficient. Hundreds of tornadoes tore through a handful of communities across the Southeast in one of the deadliest outbreaks ever recorded. After the damage was done, the leadership at the National Weather Service took a step back. We knew that our forecasts and warnings for the Southeast had been spot-on and timely. From four days out, our convective risk maps pointed to the very epicenter of the tornado outbreak. Our science was right on the money, but hundreds of people had died. That was the turning point for all of us, and it led to the creation of our Evolve initiative. We knew that we would never waver from our commitment to improve our weather forecasting and technological capabilities, from supercomputing capacity to upgrading our satellites. At NOAA, we call that the W in the NWS, the weather component. But after 2011, we knew that we had to improve our ability to put life-saving data, and here's the crux of the matter, it was to put life-saving data into the hands of our government partners and local decision-makers so they can evacuate hospitals, alert schools, close roads and flood flashpoints, and bus senior citizens away from harm. We started to build vibrant two-way partnerships so that our information would spur real action. We called this effort "Impact-Based Decision Support Service," IDSS. We have been connecting with communities differently ever since, liaisoning with decision-makers like Craig Fugate at FEMA, who uses our information to determine when and where to preposition snow plows or generators before a nor'easter, or partnering with governors such as Jay Nixon, who declared a state of emergency and activated the National Guard to address the recent flood in Missouri. Our mission is clear-cut. It is not just to get the prediction right. It is not enough to just inform. We must deliver actionable information where it truly matters. We've evolved from focusing exclusively on the W in NWS to the S part-two, the customer The Evolve effort has made us more nimble and responsive to our stakeholders, including our employees, our partners in the enterprise, those of you in this room, and the American people. I wholeheartedly support this effort. What does our service outreach look like? Over the holidays before severe weather-struck communities across the U.S., the National Weather Service went to work, service work. We provided flood forecasts for the state of Missouri, giving authorities days of lead time. Our local field meteorologists were in regular contact with local authorities, telling them with pinpoint accuracy when the water would hit, where, and in what intensity. We brought our science to their decision-making, and thanks to our collaboration, the Ozark Scenic Riverways National Park evacuated campers, set up barricades at roads at risk of flooding, and closed river access points early. Our actions in Missouri saved lives, but we also know lives were lost across the state and elsewhere. Hence, we cannot rest with our efforts to improve until every community can say they are environmentally and economically resilient. All of us here, we are standing at the threshold of a new era. We have unlimited license, each and every one of you, all of us in the entire weather enterprise. We have license to create, to synergize, to come together to create more advanced analytics, to deploy smaller and frankly, more weather sensors, or to create new mobile apps that change the way we distribute and use information. Our Big Data Project is NOAA's own way of joining the era of creative collaboration. We're partnering with industry and academia to make our extraordinary volume of data more easily accessible to more people. As we consider these and other possibilities, let me whet your appetite with a few potential hypothetical scenarios that could come from our greater collaboration. Imagine private weather enterprise might layer NOAA weather data on top of information from the financial sector, real estate, or the aviation industry to develop new assessments of weather vulnerability for those industries. The climate enterprise could meld NOAA's long-term climate forecast for sea level, heat waves, and droughts with data about air quality, water availability, or other environmental health indicators so that communities can make better planning decisions and improve their resilience. Companies could layer NOAA data about our seas with intelligence from the Port Authority, the International Trade Administration, private shipping companies, the Coast Guard, and more, to create new insights and analysis that make it more feasible and economically viable to tap our ocean resources. Such partnerships and potential synergies are within reach and limited frankly, only by our imagination. We have the potential together to ultimately produce the information, tools, and services that can assure our ability to respond to high-impact weather without loss of life, property, or livelihoods. But to do this, we must work together. As we navigate these new currents of opportunity, I want to underscore fundamental principle. When it comes to innovation, risk is an integral to that process. But when it comes to safeguarding our nation, market failure is unacceptable. With an infinite number of information sources, the American public needs an authoritative voice they can trust to make critical safety decisions. We respectfully believe that to be our role. Beyond the scope of that critical responsibility, there exists enormous, considerable space and latitude for innovation across the entire weather enterprise. This community has already shown it can deliver prosperity, security, and economic benefit to our nation, and I have great faith that as we approach this new frontier, the public, private, and academic sectors will continue to partner and capitalize on each other's strengths. If I may, in closing, I want to ask everyone in this room, yes, that means you, to take a moment, look around. What you see is a comprehensive representation of the weather enterprise. Staff from NOAA and other federal agencies, leaders in the private sector, researchers from academia, policy experts from the nonprofit sector, students, all of us here, we are the weather enterprise. We have the answers to the challenges we face. If we focus together, we can evolve and solve the problems ahead of us. As I look around this room, I have confidence in all of you, and I am truly excited about our shared future. Thank you very much.
So, good afternoon. I am Dr. Marshall Shepherd, and I'm the 2013 President of the American Meteorological Society and Director of the Atmospheric Sciences Program at the University of Georgia, and I host a little show on the Weather Channel called Weather Geeks. It is my pleasure and my honor to be sitting here moderating this question-and-answer session. And before we get started, I want to introduce a good colleague and good friend of mine that I've known for many years, Dr. Katherine Sullivan. Dr. Sullivan is the NOAA Administrator, and she was confirmed by the United States Senate to be the Administrator in March 2014. She is a distinguished scientist, renowned astronaut, and an intrepid explorer. Prior to her appointment, the Administrator, she held the position of Assistant Secretary of Commerce for Environmental Observation and Prediction. She is also the United States Co-Chair of the Group on Earth Observations. She was the inaugural Director of the Batel Center for Mathematics and Science Education Policy in the John Glenn School of Public Affairs at the Ohio State University, let's make sure we get that in. Prior to the joining the Ohio State University, she served a decade as President and CEO of the Center of Science and Industry in Columbus, Ohio, one of the nation's leading science museums. And it's really interesting, she's one of the people on this planet that I admire, and she's also one of the people that has left this planet as well. So it's really important to hear from her. She has a Bachelor's Degree in Earth Sciences from the University of California at Santa Cruz and a Doctorate in Geology from John Housie University. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks, Marshall. We'll make you an honorary citizen of Ohio with that introduction.
Absolutely. So I want to begin with a discussion with Secretary Pritzker. Secretary Pritzker, you have called the Department of Commerce America's "data agency," and we just heard some of your remarks there. Many in the audience have businesses that rely directly on data from NOAA. Can you tell us about your efforts to make more Commerce data available to more users, and can you give us an update on NOAA's Big Data Project? We heard somewhat about it in your remarks.
Sure, let me elaborate a little bit. First of all, thank you for having me here. It's really a great pleasure. You know, if you think about the Department of Commerce, the reason that we think of ourselves as America's data agency is because our data has the greatest reach, the greatest breadth and depth of any agency in the federal government. So think about what do we do? We do everything from we measure time to measuring GDP. We measure personal income to measuring population growth. We measure water temperature to measuring everything from sea level to weather. So we have an enormous breadth of data. I think we produce somewhere between 20 and 40 terabytes of data a day. That's three to five libraries of Congress every single day. But we have enormous, and we have extraordinary usage of our data, particularly at the Weather Service. But we have an enormous amount of untapped value. And so, you know, when I say untapped value, what do I mean? We have all this inventory of data, but we lack insights from it and insights that can help with economic growth. You know, if you think about data, data is like fuel that's been not refined. And if you think about it, you know, if we don't analyze our data, all we have is sort of, you know, it's sitting there, and that's the opportunity ahead of us. And so, we've done a couple of things at the department. The first, and I'll get to the NOAA project in a minute, the first is we created department-wide something called the Commerce Data Service. And this is an internal group at the Department of Commerce of software engineers and data scientists, and their goal, and you might ask yourself, well, how does the federal government attract this kind of talent? But we have taken advantage of certain presidential initiatives to attract some of the best and the brightest from around the world, from around the country, who are willing to come and spend some time helping us do this. And their goal is to improve accessibility to our data and to improve the insights that we have. Now, as for NOAA's Big Data Project, you know, we announced it in April at AMS. It began as a partnership with five anchor partners with a goal of making our data more accessible. So we started first with Amazon and Microsoft and IBM, Google, and a consortium that's based out of the University of Chicago. We've now added, the Climate Corporation and AccuWeather have joined the group. As I said, the goal is to make our data more accessible. So the first project that we have is that we've made 25 years of our NextRAD data, which is the real-time Doppler precipitation information, available, you know, which is just our very first project. And one of the things that we have learned is, through both the Big Data Project and through our Commerce Data Service, is that if we're going to be successful in achieving our dream, which is our information being more useful to more decision-makers, we have to partner, and that's just become really obvious. And what I tried to say in my speeches, there's a role for government to play. There's a very specific role around safety and security. But there's so many roles that we need to partner and work together, and that's really the cultural attitude that Dr. Uchelini, that Dr. Sullivan, and I have been pushing forward with not only both the data project, but frankly, every aspect of how we're running the Weather Service.
And I think that's important. Thank you very much. It's important to have that type of leadership, and as a representative and a past President of the AMS, I just want to thank you for coming to the American Meteorological Society. I have been around quite a while, and I don't know that I've ever seen a Department of Commerce Secretary here in our midst, and I think it's a credit to you recognizing the value of the data that you're providing. I wanted to pivot over to Dr. Sullivan. Do you have anything that you'd like to add to those remarks?
I would just add two things. I've coined a simple-minded way of thinking about these anchor-partner arrangements that we've set up. We basically asked these companies to help us through commercial R&amp;D arrangements to set up sort of virtual sandboxes. We don't know, and it became clear in our early conversations, that the companies and many of our partners even in this room also didn't know really for sure what kind of value, what kind of opportunity does lie in the data, what all kinds of data are in all those data warehouses and shoeboxes that we have. all those data warehouses and shoeboxes that we have throughout NOAA. So, the challenge kind of was, how do we create opportunities in some environments where we, NOAA, we, those five anchor partners, and anyone else who wants to go into one of those innovation arenas and explore it, a sandbox where we can explore what the potential might be? So, the anchor partners are just that. They've kind of established the sandboxes. The charge we gave to them, and they agreed, is to be open to other players joining them to look around, so it's not a elbows-out, protect-my-first-opportunity.
It's a welcoming sandbox.
It's a welcoming sandbox. Come on in and play, and we're learning together a lot of things. We're learning about the practical challenges of getting the data off of our tape reels into the sandbox. They're learning and putting a lot of commitment with not yet a clear sight of how they will necessarily make a financial return. So, I think it's a really fabulous and novel example of public-private partnership where both are pushing beyond their normal boundaries. The only other comment that I would make is, I think the Secretary's remarks do a great job of really giving us, reminding us of this tremendous wave of change with so many drivers to it that we're all going to navigate through in the years ahead. And one of the things that I feel is critically important for all of NOAA, and in particular, perhaps, the National Weather Service, is that we have to, we have to resist and reject a common but false dichotomy that says government does the dumb and stupid mechanical roles and the private sector innovates. The implication is that only the private sector knows how to innovate, or can innovate, or should have the license or permission to innovate. Accepting that kind of dichotomy is a recipe for the death of any organization. So, we will reject that for NOAA just on the basis of our responsibility to sustain NOAA as a healthy and vibrant enterprise. That's not some imagined claim that we're suddenly become, going to become the most, you know, venture capital shop or something very different than our nature. But it does say, we intend to be, and we feel quite welcome, being with you and partners with you in the innovation that has to happen going forward, not sideline players and not just passive, passive actors.
Yeah, I think that's an interesting point, and I guess it's appropriate that I'm seated in the middle here, because as a person's a middleman, I've been in the private sector, in the public sector, and now in academia. And it's important to sort of understand that we all bring innovation and all bring our own skillset to the problems that face the nation. Secretary Pritzker, you have quite a reputation with your business experience and your experience in the private sector. How do you bring that experience and that perspective to bear in managing the department, working with NOAA? And have there been any particular surprises as someone coming out of that sector, working in the public sector now?
Well, first of all, as Sandy mentioned, I've spent 27 years in the private sector. This is my first government job. And so, all I had to bring to the table was my private sector experience. And the first thing that I've tried to do is something that I fundamentally believe is the way you run any organization. I believe in driving from the bottom up. I believe in, in that the knowledge for how, you know, it's so bizarre. You show up at a, as a Cabinet Secretary, and everyone asks you, what are your priorities? And then, these folks are all experts in everything from the Weather Service to patent and trademarks to international trade, and they're asking me what the priorities are. I find that bizarre. I feel instead, my job is to unlock the knowledge and the entrepreneurial spirit within our own organizations and to be, to help each of our agencies, we have 12 agencies, be the best that they can be in serving their customer, and their customer is folks like yourself, and the private sector, and the American people. So, that means what we did was, we created a strategic plan. And I say "we," I mean "we." We came together, both the political appointees and our leader, our career leadership, and said, who are we and what do we stand for? And that led to a strategic plan called our Open for Business Agenda. And it has us focusing on four things: trade and investment, innovation, data, and environmental intelligence. And then we, and then we have an overarching cultural commitment to do this with operational excellence. But one thing I know from everything that I've ever run in my life, which is, you know, dozens of different businesses, and from my startup experience with five different companies, is that you have to empower people, and that you have to, if you want to accomplish and, and move the ball forward, it can't be top-down, it has to be bottoms-up. And the other thing that I know is cross-fertilization offers a lot of benefit. And that really means, in order for us to cross-fertilize between, let's say, NOAA working with Census and EES, and our Economic Statistics Agency to reveal more information, or to do the NOAA Big Data Project, requires leadership within the NOAA organization. It requires leadership from Dr. Sullivan, from Dr. Uchulini, from their entire team saying, we see the benefit in this. Because if they don't, yeah, they may do it for a little while to appease the Secretary and get her off your back, but in the end, they're not really going to carry through with those projects for the long haul. And then the other thing that I've tried to do from the private sector is do what all of you do, which is to manage using tools that try to be effective. We have an operating committee, we have a risk management committee, we have a strategic playbook as to what we want to get done. Those tools are open, transparent, everybody works from them. It's not like I know what we're getting done and nobody else does. And so, when somebody says, well, I don't know what, what our goals are, I say, well, that's your fault, not mine, because I'm not hiding the ball. So, those are some of the things that we've tried to do at the department. And the surprise is, is the entrepreneurial spirit that exists within the government. If you, as a leader, say, my job is to help you accomplish your goals, right? Then you, the dreaming begins, the innovation begins, the partnership takes off with the private sector and others. Well, if I could only work with that company, with IBM, and Google, and Microsoft, and Amazon, and AccuWeather, if I could only work with them, you know, to try and unleash something, you know, particular goals or objectives, get our Doppler information out there. Well, why can't we? Why can't we? And so, that's how I view, and it's, I call it a thousand flowers blooming, and I see it throughout our department, you know, in many of our different agencies. People, our, our teams are waking up to, well, what if? And that's exciting.
Let me pick up on that imagery that you just mentioned about flowers blooming. Because here at the AMS, one of the things that we pride ourselves on is the activity of our student members and our early-career professionals. I mean, they really are the energy and lifeblood of the organization. We had over 750 students at our student conference this weekend. It's a unique opportunity for them. Many of them, hopefully, in this room are following us, hashtag AMS2016 on Twitter, to have this exposure to the Secretary of Commerce or the Administrator of NOAA. What would you say, and I want to start with you first, what would you say to those early-career professionals or those students that really are the sort of young seedlings or flowers blooming for our next-generation society and economy?
There's three things that I would say to the students. First of all, obviously, by virtue of being here, you recognize the value of networking, of getting to know the community in which you want to build your professional career, and you recognize the value of professional development. And you're going to need to do that your entire life, and the earlier you start, and the more systematic you are about it, the more it will help you. So, that would be number one. Number two is, it's my observation, and I have to tell you, this was new. I learned this as Secretary of Commerce and not something I knew before. The need for environmental intelligence that is useful, timely, reliable, and actionable is only growing, it's not receding. And it is going to grow in our students' careers. And think about it. The demand for customized, hyper-localized, personalized weather forecasts, environmental outlooks, planning tools that can help our decision-makers make, you know, prepare for extreme events, is growing exponentially, and it's exploding. And so, what does that mean for you who are a student or new in your career? It means the weather enterprise is a very vibrant, exciting place to be. And with all that change, with all this uncertainty created by new players and things like that, comes opportunity. And so, I think you're in a very vibrant place with, that appears to me to be a place of significant personal and career, as well as business and nonprofit opportunity. And the third thing I want to say is, I, you know, having come from the private sector, I highly recommend to you, those of you early in your career, and later in your career, that you choose at some point to take the opportunity and have the honor of serving the public. Being in public service is something that is hard to understand from the outside, and there's a lot of gossip and talk about it, but there isn't a lot of real appreciation, frankly, for how fulfilling it is to serve your country. And there's no place else where you can have as significant an impact. And I'll give you an example, not from the weather enterprise. I mean, I've been in business, some would say I've had a reasonably successful career in business. But I was involved in one decision, pushing one decision of the many, many that we get to work on in government, of trying to expand the visa between China and the United States from one year to 10 years. If that was achieved, it would have an $85 billion a year impact on our GDP and create 330,000 jobs. Nowhere in my private sector life, no matter, if you accumulated everything I ever did, would it have that kind of impact. And that's the kind of thing that public service gives you, the privilege of bringing what you know and have learned to apply to decisions that, at the time, they don't, you know, it's one decision in a week, but can have such significant impact. I know Dr. Sullivan, Dr. Uchulini, and others in our organization feel the same. They have, it's why you get up in the morning excited about these jobs, even though it's hard and it's political, and you have to convince a lot of people to go along. Public service is, is really terrific thing, and you don't have to make it your whole career. And if you do make it your whole career, it is extraordinary. I mean, we have Nobel Prize winners in our midst, even at the Department of Commerce. So, anyway, those are my three observations for our students.
Yeah, and if you're tweeting out there to AMS2016, make sure you tweet out there the value of public service. I think that's a really admirable message to get out there more broadly, because there's so much negative. Yeah, that deserves a hand. It really does, because I think we hear some really negative things at times, and it's undeserved. Dr. Sullivan, would you add anything to those remarks?
I would just endorse what the Secretary was saying, and, you know, it's the thing that keeps drawing me back to NOAA. My personal motivation that attracts me back to NOAA is a lifelong drive and fascination to understand this planet, not just how it works from a physical systems point of view, but how everything, including the, the social systems, the human beings, the cultures, the landscapes, the economies, the whole kit and caboodle. And NOAA is a place where that foundational understanding of how the planet itself works has more threads connecting through those different domains than anywhere else I've ever seen. From, you know, from the observation through the refinery chain, as the Secretary said, I'm going to steal that, ma'am, that's a great metaphor, from the observation itself all the way through the refinery train, chain, to action and to impact on real lives and real livelihoods in the real world. That is the bread and butter of NOAA. That is what we do every single day, not just in the National Weather Service, although it's most known there perhaps, but across all of our frontiers. So, if you want to be involved in work that matters, if you want to be involved in a diversity of things, if you want to have really powerful and gratifying line of sight from whichever piece of that chain you're on, up to the upstream of the planet itself and down to people whose lives you've affected, there is nowhere better than NOAA to be. And the future, as I think I said to this audience last year, A, it's going to be ever-growing need and importance of this kind of environmental intelligence and actionable information, and B, it's going to be more and more and more about intersections, the intersection of food and water and energy, the intersection of society and the natural environment. And being at the source, being at NOAA is being at the source for all of those conversations ahead.
Yeah, and we'll hear a bit more about that when you join us for Weather Geeks taping tomorrow. Hope some of you'll come out there in exhibit hall. Unfortunately, this is the point where Dr. Pritzker, I'm sorry, Secretary Pritzker is going to have to leave us. Secretary Pritzker has been so gracious and valuable with her time. Thank you for joining us.
Thank you. You're awesome. Thanks, thank you.
We are going to continue the conversation with Dr. Sullivan now, and I believe note cards will be passed out at this point. So, if anyone has any questions for Dr. Sullivan, please raise your hand and take a note card, and we will have someone coming around to take those cards. You can also submit questions at the hashtag AMS2016 as well. And while, while we're distributing those cards, I want to take this opportunity to just ask you a question as a leader in our field. What, at this moment in time, excites you most about the weather enterprise?
Well, the moment excites me, and I think we've touched on a lot of facets of that in the Secretary's remarks and in the Q&amp;A to this point. But beyond the moment, I would say three things. The, the impact, and I've just talked about that in my most recent comment. This is work that really matters. And again, anywhere you are in this ecosystem, a government badge, a private sector badge, an academic badge, anywhere in that chain, from the sensor that makes the observation down to sitting in front of a, either a private sector customer or an emergency manager or partner, the impact is, is exciting, it's important. I think it's a natural human thing to hope to see meaning and value in the work you do, and it's, it's vivid and it's real and it's daily in this arena, and that's just tremendously exciting. The diversity of this field and of this enterprise excites me, and I mean that on kind of every axis you can think about. You can't, we cannot do this work unless we understand the atmosphere and the ocean, and increasingly, the interaction of those physical systems with biological systems of our planet, biomes, ecologically, larger ecosystems, you know, you name it. The diversity of activities along that chain, from design a new sensor, figure out the fundamental physics of a different sensing mechanism, down to the computational, new computational capabilities and how they can improve our representation of the planet itself, and all the way down to better understanding of how human beings process information and confront risk. So, that huge disciplinary diversity, and the mix of players from academia to private sector to, it's just a fascinating, rich environment to be in. And it's, I too have been in the private sector, the nonprofit sector, and the public sector, and it is, it is a rare, this is a uniquely rich crucible, if you will, to me. And then finally, as I said, I will forever be excited and intrigued about this little blue marble that we live on and how endlessly dynamic it is, the dynamics, its dynamics are clearly changing as we are living in ways that have not been seen in the span of human lifetimes for quite some time, if ever, in the past. And so, that is both a, an opportunity, raises an opportunity, it raises an imperative, and for me, it just heightens the passion and the excitement.
So, do we have any, have we collected the questions? And, okay, great, it looks like we do have some, so we'll, yeah, and I think your remarks are quite appropriate as someone who has actually seen that blue marble from a vantage point that many of us probably will never see. And I think that does, from what I understand from talking to many of your colleagues, it gives a new perspective. Thank you. So, we have a couple of questions here. I'll just start. So, you've worked with education and outreach. How, as a scientist, would you recommend we improve our translation of the science for the public? Is there, I can't read that last part, but basically, they're sort of getting at this notion of communicating science, and I see that as an issue as well.
Yeah, it, it is a challenge. Let me, let me offer a couple of thoughts on that. Three thoughts, I guess. One, you can bundle several of them into one umbrella. The answer is, respect your audience. And take it as your job to connect to the audience, not their job to understand you. That poses a couple of challenges, I think, to scientists. One is we're, because we, we live in a peer review and peer approval kind of culture as a general matter. So, if I say something in simple kitchen-table terms, my 10 PhD colleagues right behind me are going to sneer and laugh that I said it, you know, I left out rich nuance and detail. I failed to account for all the variations and all the caveats, and, and I dumbed it down. Oh, my goodness. And I left out details. So, it's- So it's, that's an issue. We suffer from our own cultural lenses, and we're reluctant to risk our standing with our peers. We have to get over that ourselves, and as a community, we have to let each other off that hook to a greater degree. I think another thing is, understand that people relate to story, and human beings are pattern-making creatures. So if you can convey things in ways that intersect stories or patterns they already know, you're easing, you're speeding, you're simplifying their engagement with and their comprehension of what you're trying to tell them. So that kind of all comes under, watch out that you're not just stuck in transmit vocabulary, story, and, you know, respect for, respect for the fact that if I can engage this person here and really engage them, they, they're learning creatures. They will learn and grow and evolve in their sophistication. If I just transmit my PhD detail at them, none of that will happen. Communication means, or conversation means exchange with, it doesn't mean transmit at.
Yeah, and, you know, I want to kind of follow up on that remark you made about our peer-review colleagues sort of snickering at the sort of quote-unquote watering now. And frankly, and I often say this, you know, if we as experts are not out there in the public engaging and communicating weather and climate information accurately, those that aren't experts will fill the gap for us, the good communicators. And so, we've got, as an academic, as a broader community, we've got to get past that, in my view, and I think you support that notion.
And you just prompted recollection of one other anecdote that's pertinent here, Marshall. I was talking to a colleague a couple of years ago from the Department of Homeland Security. It was actually on, in the topic of big data, but the point is pertinent here, too. And so, the point was, how much of these 20 terabytes of data or how much of all of this vast scientific nuance and detail do you actually need? And his comment, from the perspective of someone facing an emergency or facing an important decision, he flat-out said, said, "I don't care at all about your 20 terabytes of data. I don't want them, don't send them. I'm craving that little bitty dollop of information that's in there somewhere that's pertinent to the circumstance I'm facing now. And so, send me that." And by the way, that's going to change a lot. If I'm in the middle of a fire, a wildfire, I need to know uphill 100 yards water. It's all I need to know. I don't need the topography, I don't need the slope, I don't need the land cover, I don't need any of that other stuff. You will put in the research paper at the end, tell me, you know, uphill 20 yards now. If I'm a city planner, working with my community on a six-month planning process, I can factor in more. So our own sensitivity, our own willingness to, each of us tailored to the audience at hand, is really an important piece of this.
Okay, let's kind of pivot to a question here. I'm going to combine a couple of questions that came in. So the question about your perspective and elaborating on the secretary's remarks about where that line is between, from your perspective, on what is uniquely a private versus a public function? And then secondly, there's a question about what are your thoughts on sort of charging for some of the new data that will be coming available, fees for things like new radar data sets and satellite data sets and whatnot? So first question related to the line for public-private and then fees for data.
So my own take on this question of roles is, first of all, that the word "line" is the wrong word to use. And I keep going back to my recollection of the Fair Weather Report of some years ago that, at least to my reading of it, cautioned us that attempting to scribe a line with a .000 rapidograph pen and etch it in and, you know, set up police barricades and police each other on it was going to be a bad approach to this. I think that was true and wise when the Academy wrote it, however many years ago that is now, about 16 years ago. And I think the wave of change we're going through is going to prove again that it's more true and necessary than ever. I think there's going to be lots of turmoil and shifting and changing. Some will be, some will be parties in this room actively poking and changing their roles. Some will be the ground shifting under different players' feet. I think we're all going to be exploring and finding anew what the seams and handshakes and dovetails are between the public and the private sector as this goes forward. Again, I think I, I looked at my remarks from last year to AMS as I was getting ready for this forum, and I'm about, my head is about where it was then. Lots of change, I don't have a crystal ball, but we have a tremendous range of talent and capability and capacity here to serve the country. And if we can stay and engaged in a, as constructive as possible co-exploration, I think we'll get to the right place. Whose will go smaller, bigger, left, right, up, or down, I don't have a prediction for, but I think we need to stay together in the innovation space and be focused on endpoints of serving the nation well and growing the enterprise in health and vitality in every portion, from the research and observation underpinning to the private sector.
Now, the second part of that was related to, do you see an era where we're moving more into fee-based data access?
Yeah, we're wrestling with that and exploring that question in NOAA right now, and I don't have a settled answer to it. It's, to me, it's part of this massive wave of change that's underway. It's part of what I hear a variety of folks on Capitol Hill of all spectrums across the aisle also asking is, here is this, here's this new thing called a data revolution. Part of what that is creating is a new moment of folks realizing that their data is as valuable as oil to some kinds of machine. We've sort of never thought about data in quite that way before this era. What will that mean? What will that translate to in terms of new business models and/or new policy models? Again, I think that's one of the things we're going to all find out, we're going to debate it together, we're going to explore it together, we're going to, we're going to learn through some successful business models, probably through some failed business models. It's going to be a period of exploration and experimentation.
Right. And on that, we've got one, two last questions there, both somewhat quick questions, and then we'll close out the panel and session. There's a question about your experience as an astronaut. How does that inform your thinking from a scientist's perspective? And as an administrator with an agency that's dealing with big challenges that our Earth faces? And then secondly, as a woman, and also as a scientist that comes from different backgrounds, what are your thoughts on inclusion and diversity in our field going forward? Particularly when we just heard new results from the AMS surveys that suggest that some of our diversity and gender numbers haven't changed in the last 10 years.
Well, my astronaut experience plays out on, you know, on countless levels. As a scientist, my natural interest in how the world works and all of its intersections and interconnections was just, you know, fired and strengthened even more when you actually get to see such vivid evidence of that right before your eyes in so many really spectacularly different ways. It also fired my, and intensified my passion to make that kind of perspective. You know, we are the first generation of humankind that's had the perspective to observe the Earth from afar in meaningful ways, to make actual quantifiable measurements and have computing and knowledge capabilities that can turn those into the kind of information that we're talking about. That's totally novel in human history, to have some foresight about what conditions will be 24 hours or several days from now that you can act on. That's extraordinary capability, and we're babies still at learning how it folds into society and to businesses and to our economies. So the space experience just fired me even more to want to make that technical capacity matter to life on Earth, and that continues to drive me forward. Countless other aspects of being an astronaut, team-building, integration of complex elements, dealing with multiple perspectives, keeping everyone focused on it is at the end about the mission, and we've got to all stay as true to that as we can, still understanding each other's perspectives. That has certainly helped. You know, it, probably the obvious punchline is you do look at risk in rather different ways when you shift out of the astronaut corps to kind of anything else.
That's a great point.
But you get pretty good at taking a really steely-eyed look at risk. On diversity inclusion, that is going to remain, I think, a really very thorny problem for us. We've taken a fresh start at that within NOAA, just within the last several months, frankly, because I had failed to put it on a high enough footing earlier in my own tenure. But Manson Brown came aboard as our Assistant Secretary for Environmental Observation and Prediction, and very rightly, gently respectfully but with a firm nudge, called me out on it. And the story that we're, we're operating from stories on that. We've opened the ground and made it more viable and safer for individuals within NOAA to talk about really what it, what does it feel like and how am I feeling being here in NOAA? I was one of the first six women in the astronaut corps. We had all the same credentials, we'd been through the same selection process. Our male classmates knew that and backed us on that. But you know what? We were walking into a culture that was already set, and it was set in a sort of military squadron kind of ethos. That's very good for urging and challenging and catalyzing people to their top-peak individual performance. But I remember feeling in those days, I know I fit there and I was performing there and I was succeeding there, but I always kind of felt like every day I sort of had to, you know, tighten up my laces and edit myself just a little, because certain natural styles of mine didn't fit super well with the preferred natural styles of the group I was in, and always would get you this sort of askance look. Some of that is, none of that was intentional, some of it's very valid. The organization had a proven pattern of when you behave this way, success happens. So a premium is put on people behaving that way because we know that works. Valid point. But it's not the only way that works. It's not the only style or manner, especially of doing the small things, that can get you to the same level of success. So it is learning from each other, it is, it is learning a lot, your style's different than mine, and that's okay, because it's going to get to the same point of excellence that I'm aiming at. You're not asking to lower that commitment just so you get to have your style. But that takes a different approach to being willing to learn from each other. And I think the thing that's going to, if anything, will start to change for the better this dynamic, it will be things like those of us who feel we are in the majority culture of this organization. It's on us to open the door and reach out to folks who are less numerous in the society. If we wait until there's enough of them feeling strong enough to barge through the door, this room will look exactly the same 20 years from now.
Yeah, and I think that echoes a conversation that President, past President Bill Gill and I and others were having just this morning at breakfast. So with that, I think we have to wrap this up. We want to thank you, Administrator Sullivan, for coming out and sharing some of your time with some of the members of the AMS Annual Meeting. Thank you all for coming and supporting the American Meteorological Society, and let's give Dr. Sullivan one last name.